Are there any agenda additions? Item number one, consent agenda. Our claims are at 527,992 dollars and ninety-four cents. Our fringes are a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents. Meeting minutes to approve, regular meeting minutes of four sixteen two thousand nineteen. Special meeting for twenty-three two thousand nineteen. Special for twenty-six two thousand nineteen. Work session for four thirty two thousand nineteen and special on May our five oh-two two thousand eighteen. C, approve six-month wage increase for Dennis Beretta. R and T, one secondary rule effective for two two thousand nineteen. D, approve step increase for Chad Butterhoff. M G two secondary rule effective May twenty-second two thousand nineteen. E, approve appointment of Kimberly Sheets as first deputy auditor's office effective seven-one two thousand nineteen. F, approve appointment of Chris Bolin as second deputy auditor's office effective seven-one two thousand nineteen. G, approve classification from temporary to part-time employment status for Miranda Lee, clerk, auditor's office effective four-one two thousand nineteen. H, approve removal from payroll Jane Summers, temporary election clerk, auditor's office effective eleven to two thousand eighteen. I, approve temporary seasonal hire of Mary Hackland, conservation effective April twentieth two thousand nineteen. J, approve agreement between city of Oconah, Warren County Nutrition Program. K, approve agreement between Martisdale Lines Hall and Warren County Nutrition Program. L, approve agreement between city of Carlisle and Warren County Nutrition Program. M, approve agreement between New Virginia Lines Club Hall and Warren County Nutrition Program. Is there a question?
No.
No, okay.
Just back on H.
Back on H?
Back on H, that should be eighteen, not nineteen.
Yeah.
Oh.
Should be nineteen, not eighteen. Well, it should be nineteen instead.
No.
No, that's right.
Well, okay.
Eighteen.
Yep.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right. And set public hearing date of five twenty-nine two thousand nineteen at eight-thirty a.m. regarding FY nineteen budget amendment. And that is our consent agenda.
I just have one question. Tracy, on E and F, did we put those in the budget for nineteen? I'm sure those are pay increases also.
Yes. And it's not at this time in next year's budget because we just threw this.
All right, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Can Volcker?
Show.
Aye.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item number two on the agenda is public hearing regarding rezoning of land from A one to C two, submitted by Andrew Cleva with possible action. I have one minute before nine thirty-five. So Lindsey? All right, I would accept a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Show?
Aye.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay. Andrew is looking to purchase a two-point-three-nine acre piece of ground from Mark Harrow and rezonate from A one to C two for the purpose of rezoning to commercial for building a fifteen-thousand's worth of building for his HVAC business. And and he'd like to locate his HVAC business at twenty-three fifty-four R sixty-three highway, Norwalk, Iowa, size zero-two-one-one. The area in Warren County is A one zone and is located on R sixty-three highway with a southwest nine interchange, Des Moines annexed land located across the street into the north. This was located just south. This is the first just south of the North Horn fire department. County zoning is A one directly across the road. The city of Des Moines sent notice to the city of Des Moines off of Highway five R sixty-three, recommend hearing all evidence and let the hearing play out. There were a couple neighbors that sent in some concerns. Carla Denver Cunningham stopped into our zoning office on four-thirty with questions, four-thirty two thousand nineteen, with questions about the property and the use. The zoning staff was unavailable. Carrie Collins goes to Ms. Cunningham on five-one to explain the rezoning request and they are okay with the proposed use of Mark. But they called in the office again. He's called a couple times. He called in again this morning to let us know that he is in favor of the rezoning request. I did speak to Eric Lundin prior to the zoning commission meeting and we did not receive anything prior to the zoning commission meeting. However, they did, the city of Des Moines did send in a letter or an email to our office that was dated Friday, April twenty-sixth. So Carrie did get that sent in to you for the packets from the city of Des Moines, sent up to you. And then also, the neighbor that had come in was Michael Schmidt. He had, he was at the zoning commission meeting and he had expressed concerns that he was not going to be able to make it today. And he stopped in again on four-twenty-nine to the office. And he, again, he expressed numerous concerns and I wrote those all out on the notepad. And we copied those and sent those in to you also. So he's very against it. He is actually directly affected. He's the next owner. The zoning commission did recommend, to recommend denial of the request to rezonate from A one to C two. And there was, that was a five-to-one vote. There was a five recommended denial and one abstained from voting on the night of the meeting. So.
Lindsey?
Yes.
Is it a bare piece of ground, two-point-nine acres?
I think there's trees on it.
Yes, there is. Yes. And there's, there's a small sort of building.
It's a house.
House.
And a garage.
Just so you are aware that if this does get rezoned, and I know that was a general concern with the zoning commission, was the size of the building and the size of the lot, the size of the building that they're wanting to build. If this would get rezoned, they would have to go to the board of adjustments for barriers for setbacks. And that was kind of hanging up for the zoning commission, so.
Is this building bigger than the fire station?
Yeah, this is a fifteen-thousand's worth.
Yeah, the drawing you have, I think it's a hundred by hundred fifty. Obviously, we should change that proportionally.
And the night of the meeting, Andrew actually wasn't able to meet. He was out of town, so his dad actually represented him the night of the meeting. But Andrew is actually there today, so he can answer some questions if you've got him about that.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so if anyone wants to address this issue, please approach the podium and state your name and your address.
I'll show you just tell my sort of
Yeah.
The facility, I guess a little bit about the facility. There's going to be less than ten, ten people there daily. Be minimal traffic in and out. Typically, two freight, two freight companies. So not a lot of impact in that area.
Andrew, where is the business now located?
It's on one-hundred-and-four street in Des Moines, Iowa. But we'll just kind of get out of town a little bit. And if you already purchased the room, have it out.
This is very good forethought. Lindsey, what, what were the comments from Des Moines, city of Des Moines? I mean, I have it in front of me, but I can't quite understand. There's, there's only good change when they get asked.
Well, the city of Des Moines, I think, calls for, at first when I called them, they were, when I talked to them, they were telling me, you know, the law for commercial wouldn't be being healed. And then right before Hackland sent the notices out, the second time for the Board of Supervisors meeting, we got this notice that says it calls for load moving out, look, future load and moving out of this residential development in that area. And they're concerned about sanitary sewer, you know, and things being ran on septic, you know, obviously this is on a septic. And, you know, we, we don't have contact. You know, they are required to prevent the sewer. So I, I think that's kind of, you know. When would that be annexed into this at the end of point? I don't know. So, you know, these were just their general kind of comments. And I just said I would make sure we got them written down and that these were their concerns. So.
All right.
Yeah.
I don't have any further questions for you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Any other comments concerning?
I move the regular session.
Second.
Show?
Aye.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Before this is the rezoning of land from A one to C two submitted by Andrew Cleva with possible action. I would take a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Just write that, you just made a motion to approve the application to rezonate?
Yes. Do you want to, will you second or third readings?
Sure. Not in a second then. Didn't, didn't the zoning board recommend five-to-one to not approve the application? So are we? I, my, here's my personal thoughts. I appreciate that business wants to help and grow. I did read with some concern the city of Des Moines' future thoughts on the area. I read the neighbors' thoughts on the area and the size and scope of the building. On two-point-three acres at that location didn't seem ideal to me. And so I'm going to be a no vote on rezoning it to commercial one. So I'm not seconding motion. You guys are required. And the zoning board did go five-to-one to deny it, I believe. That's
Five prefer I'm going to deny A one abstained from voting.
Well, I'm not in a second either. So how does this work? You absolutely have to do to make a motion on this.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to deny the application rezonate from A one to commercial.
And I won't second that because I'm not a figure.
Right, I would second that.
Show?
No.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Next. Item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding rezoning of land from A one to RR one to M one, submitted by John Shannon, ATD properties, or ATD properties with possible action.
I move a public hearing.
Second.
Show?
Aye.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay. John Shannon, owner of ATD properties, wishes to rezonate the remaining portion of, or the remaining, the remainder of A to A one, from A one and RR one to M one, to be consistent with a neighboring property that's currently zoned M one, that's owned by the same company, ATD Properties. So there's general property here owned by the ATD that was previously owned by Jody and Paula Forrest. And they had rezoned a portion that was rezoned to M one. And John would like to rezonate remaining of that land to M one. And so there's some of its A one and some of its RR ones. So that's what the request is in front of you. It was M one and not restricted, the previous rezoning. So John wishes to rezonate that land regarding parcels he owns to be consistent with the M one zone parcel that he purchased from Jody and Paula Forrest. Recommend approval of the rezoning of the remainder of that property to N one to be consistent with what was already rezoned M one on four-nineteen of two thousand and sixteen. The zoning commission discussed restricting and then realized, well, the original was not restricted at that time. And they said, never mind, it's, would be too much to restrict some and not all of it. So they just decided, they made a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning request from A one and RR one to M one. And that was seconded and five voted for approval of that recommendation and one voted against that. So that's coming through with a five-to-one for approval. And we did get a letter from, or an email from one of the neighbors on April ninth. And that was read into the record for the zoning commission. Also, it was from Pat and Shannon Astor. And they were actually requesting that restrictions be put on it. Like for, for Mark Harrow, that was where we got into the discussion about the restrictions. Or part of the parcel would be restricted and part of it wouldn't. So that's all we've had on neighbors for that one. So having that John Shannon is here today. Do you have any questions?
No, we're not. All right. You're here to speak to this matter. Please approach the podium, state your name and address and your concerns.
Hi, I'm John Shannon. That is one-three-six-four-two Somerset. And basically, I'm wanting to take down a partial building or lean to it, but another building where it sits. The problem is when you come in, it's five parcels. When you come in, if you look to the right, I'm zoned commercial. Other from left, I'm zoned residential. It's just kind of a cop. But I don't see how we can't just make it all commercial. And if I step over here, I'm commercial. If I step over here, I'm commercial. But that's why I'm going to use the proposed board, I can put a different building that was there. All right.
Any others? Seeing here you're not taking motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Show?
Aye.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, I take a motion.
I would move that we rezonate from A one RR one to M one in way with a second and third reading.
Second.
Show?
Aye.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item number four, public hearing regarding following amendments to the zoning ordinance with possible action. The amendment A, amendment to chapter forty, section forty-point-zero-four, number thirty-one of the zoning ordinance. B, amendment to chapter forty, section forty-point-one-three of the zoning ordinance. C, amendment to chapter forty-one, forty-one-point-zero-two, parentheses one L, in parentheses, section forty-one-point-zero-four, parentheses one J, in parentheses, section forty-one-point-zero-five, parentheses one K, in parentheses, section forty-one-point-zero-six, parentheses one C, in parentheses, section forty-one-point-zero-seven, parentheses one I, in parentheses, and section forty-one-point-zero-nine, parentheses two B, in parentheses, of the zoning ordinance. D, amendment to chapter forty-one, section forty-one-point-zero-two, parentheses one, in parentheses, of the zoning ordinance. Amendment to chapter forty-one, section forty-one-point-zero-two, parentheses one, in parentheses, section forty-one-point-one-zero, parentheses one, in parentheses, section forty-one-point-one-one, parentheses one, in parentheses, and section forty-one-point-one-two, parentheses one, in parentheses, of the zoning ordinance. F, amendment to chapter forty-one, section forty-one-point-zero-four, parentheses seven F, in parentheses. G, amendment to chapter forty-one, section forty-one-point-one-zero, parentheses one, in parentheses. H, amendment to chapter forty-one, section forty-one-point-one-two, parentheses four D, in parentheses, and section forty-one-point-one-three, parentheses three D, in parentheses, and, parentheses three E, in parentheses.
I move a public hearing.
Second.
Show?
Aye.
DeCoup?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay. First ordinance change is in chapter forty, section forty-o-four, definitions thirty-one, which is a definition for family. It currently reads, one or more persons occupying a single dwelling unit, provided that all, unless all members are related, blood, marriage, or adoption, no such family shall be getting over four persons. There was general discussion that night amongst the zoning commission. And it was agreed to that the definition be changed to family means one or more persons occupying a single dwelling unit. So getting rid of the relation partner and getting rid of the, the actual number of people to define family. So that was the, and that came to you with a permit for six-foot D home recognition, to change that, with that change. The next change is accessory buildings.
Pardon me, Lindsey.
Yeah.
Cheryl, what are we doing these things about? What are we doing?
Um, accessory buildings. Um, right now it says that you can't build an accessory building in your court or rear yard. And so the proposed change is for forty-point, um, chapter forty, section forty-point-one-three, accessory buildings, um, to change that to read that no accessory building shall be erected in any required court or yard other than a rear yard, except in the A one district, except as provided here and after. Accessory buildings shall conform to all minimum setback requirements. And on a corner lot, they shall conform to the setback regulations on the side street. Accessory buildings, except buildings housing animals or foul, may be erected as a part of the principal building or may be connected there to by a breezeway or similar structure, provided all yard requirements for a principal building are complied with. An accessory building, which is not part of this main building, shall not exceed the maximum accessory height restriction in the specific required zoning district. And that came, they discussed that that change rescinds. And so they voted six to zero to recommend approval of that zoning change to you also. And the third change is in multiple districts is the swimming pool ordinance. This was written in years ago, requiring swimming pools was to have a six-foot privacy from interference with a self-closing self-rotching gate. And that's in that A one section of our ordinance, the RR one section, the suburban residential, single-family residential, multiple-family residential district, mobile home park residential district. And anyway, after general discussion on that, it was agreed that the zoning commission felt we don't regulate pools and don't require permits for pools. So why are we regulating fences? They all agree that insurance companies require financing if they so desire. So the change, the requested change is to just delete these, this requirement on those following sections out of our ordinance. And that came with a six to zero recommendation to you also. And the next one was a change to chapter forty-one, section forty-one, two eighty-one, under forbidden uses, ad hoc agricultural-themed residential facilities. Those would be for special needs and up to one of ten residents. It's like, um, they found using horses, equine therapy, helps children, adults with needs for their therapy. And so that was voted six to zero to put that ordinance in, to put that change into the ordinance. The next one is the change to, requested change to chapter forty-one, section forty-one oh-two, A one, one at P, forty-one-ten, C one, one at N, forty-one-eleven, C two, one at M, and forty-one-twelve, M one, one at A A. And that's, the line is any other use is determined by the zoning administrator to be a similar and like used to one of those named above. A general example of that would be like the internet car sales that we just had. Um, you know, obviously our ordinance has been, was written in nineteen eighty. You know, that, obviously that ordinance isn't going to be in our ordinance. Internet car sales weren't a thing in the eighties. Um, so, you know, it would be an interpretation of that. And the zoning ordinance felt that this was very good. The zoning commission felt this was very good wording and it helps. So we aren't coming with every little ordinance change or wording on stuff like that. And the zoning commission voted six to zero to put that change into the ordinance. The other changes are the RR one, chapter forty-one, section forty-one oh-four, RR one seven F. And that is the principal, that's in RR one, the principal building, height is thirty-five feet. And the accessory building, right now it's twelve feet. And, um, we have a lot of people who are buying these big motorhomes, big campers, and they're not fitting in their accessory buildings. And we've had numerous requests to look at changing this ordinance from the twelve feet to between sixteen and twenty feet. And so we put a change in to request that to twenty feet. However, RR one However, R R one zoning, that is some of our subdivisions out in the county, but just, um, subdivisions, a lot of subdivisions do have covenants. And so a lot of covenants do state, you know, how tall a accessory building can be and stuff. So just so you know, this, this would be things that aren't, you know, enforced by those covenants. And that was a, um, six to zero vote to recommend that change to erect. Okay, and then, um... This change, oh, is, um, in chapter forty-one, section forty-one, ten, C one, um, this is in commercial district. Um, at O, no new residential uses shall be permitted unless accessory to a permitted principal use. This is to add, um, homes in the commercial district. Homes are allowed in an M one district, but not in a commercial district. So we're finding, you know, when people are wanting to rezone or having to leave, um, the direction of an M one zoning versus a commercial. And, Don, and I have talked about it and we feel that, you know, probably a commercial would be a lot better fit for some of these rather than sending them to an M one zoning. So that was, um, that recommended, we recommend six to zero, um, to put that change in. We're very in favor of that also. And, you know, this kind of came about from Marilyn Holgerman, and I know she's here today, that, um, we had a zoning board, we had a board of adjustment hearing for a variance, setback variance in the, um, M, in one district. And, um, one of her questions to me that night at the meeting was why are our site setback, or why are our setbacks so great in the, um, in one and in two districts? And, um, you know, we had all kind of talked about that in the office. And, um, so we said, well, we can look at putting a change in because we knew these, we were proposing some changes. So, um, right now in an M one district, um, under permitted uses, um, and when something's adjacent to an agricultural district, it reads, um, that it has to be seventy-five feet. And when it's adjacent to an R district, it needs to be a hundred feet. And we just proposed that seventy-five feet, we changed to like twenty-five feet and leave the R district at a hundred feet. Um, and the rear yard depth in the M two, we changed that to read, um, forty feet to match the M one setback of rear yard setback of forty feet also. Um, the zoning commission was not in favor of this change. Um, they, they wanted to scale up the same as it was written, so that's coming to with a denial. But, um, we, we still feel it's a little excessive, but that's up G, right? Kind of decide what you feel.
Who was the vote for that one?
That one was a, um... Six to zero.
A six?
Yeah, yeah, they wanted to see it like the same. That's it, um, we can go with it either way. Marilyn will want to speak to that, that or any of these, but, um, and so that's all the ordinance changes that we had.
This is a public hearing, so if you have, if you desire to speak to these issues, please come on up right now. Seeing hearing done, I accept a motion to go back into regular session.
One second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Dico?
Aye.
MacIntyre?
Aye.
I will make a motion to accept changes, amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding letters A through G.
Seven.
Then we can separate, then we can separately decide if we want to do H.
If you'd like to wait a second, we're reading.
And wait a second if they're agreeing.
Second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Dico?
Aye.
MacIntyre?
Aye. How would you like to handle each? If you're willing.
I guess I would just prefer not to address it at this point. I think that, um, changing setbacks or retroactively, maybe purchase ground and rely upon those setbacks. I mean, it might make things a little easier for us and see that. If I was a neighbor to someone with the expectation that I'd have these setbacks in place, and that's part of the reason why I purchased the property, I wouldn't be thrilled to go from seventy-five feet to twenty-five feet. So I'm not in favor of making amendment to chapter forty-one, last one, letter H, so I'm not in favor. I don't know if we even need to address it. If we just voted amend A through G, we could probably do that.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to item five, public hearing regarding classification of sixty-third avenue between Deer Street and Graham Street from a level B road to a level C with possible action.
I move to the public hearing.
Second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Aye.
MacIntyre?
Aye.
Good morning.
Thank you for hearing our case. I live on Deer Street and sixty-third Avenue.
Could you say your name, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Cheryl Houston, this is my neighbor, I'm Karen. Cheryl Houston. I live on Deer Street and sixty-third avenue is on the corner of our house and she lives on sixty-third.
I don't know, sixty-third is near where the dirt road comes in.
Um, anyways, if the road is very, um, muddy at all times, we try to use the road to access our, our, behind our house that the farmer's doing. There's a rut probably this deep in front of the access gate. Kids mainly partying up and down the road. It's very disturbing, especially when you're trying to sleep at night. You could liken it to somebody in your own backyard on a four-wheeler or truck stuck in the mud and wheels spinning. And this goes on all the time. And we'd like to either A, have the road rocked, or B, um, put up gates where we could open them when the road is dry so we can access. We'll have to do some work on the road ourselves to enable us to get them off the road on tour properly. Now we have to swing around and go to the neighbors', um, to a tour field. But it's very distracting, I've asked. It's mostly kids and a lot of them come in from Norwalk, you know, letting them get in the road, let's go tear it up. So it's, it's very, it's very hard to live there and listen to this all the time. And then my husband tries to mow the grass off to the side so we don't have shrubs and things taking over. And now there's ruts and you can hardly mow it. But it's very disturbing and we don't want to close it unless that's the only option. We would like to have access to go down the road ourselves for the farmers that need access to our land and the land beyond our house. And I've got signatures of all the people that listen to this noise and have been tired too. So we would really appreciate it to do something with this. Annie, you have some more comments?
My biggest one is, um, so we gravel, we gravel our own driveway into surface B. So when people come through, they bring all the mud back up on the gravel. As far as I know, Warren County's only gravelled once since I lived there in twenty-five, six, twenty-six years because it is a level B. It tells you intergeris type scenario. Um, so we're going to regravel it again this year, but it'd be nice if we just didn't have that thing that come up into our yard just to get out of the mud and turn it a lot as well. The light says, most of the kids, it would just be nice if they could close it off during the rainy season or during the rain, whether it's open up or it's not.
And, and I do have, because my husband builds fences, so we have posts, we would be willing to put them in and supply the gates. So it would be no cost to the county to put those gates up for it.
We have our engineer come up and address that issue. And then we have certain, um...
How long is the rise?
Tens of a mile. That's about that.
Did you say eight tenths?
I think it's eight tenths. It's less than a mile, I don't know where I walk it. Because it's used for...
Pretty long though.
Yeah, it's pretty long. I mean, it's, it's used for horses and people walk back and forth with their dogs and, you know, it's kept off and just...
And it's not just the ruts and the mud, it's the constant noise and not when you're trying to sleep and it's just, I'm pretty sure it's also...
Don't take my word for it, I'll tell you that. He probably knows. Oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I can just briefly reiterate from the last meeting, we still have reservations, um, regarding gating this road off. Uh, being that it is a through street, um, although a level B is still a public road. And we just, we want to be very certain that farmers in the area still have access to those fields to get their commodities to market. And we're not closing it off and putting a longer detour onto, uh, farmers and other commodities out there that they can use these for.
Now, how does it work when you go to a level C road? Um, as far as I know, it's gated. Who all has those keys to that gate? How is that?
It, it can become a challenging situation because lots get changed, keys get changed. We have a harder time accessing our own roads at that point. When you level C it, uh, we have some deadened roads where we've done this, uh, they can, it is very, very mental maintenance, so the roads can become overgrown. And we don't have, uh, the equipment to take out huge trees, um, of that nature when they do become overgrown. So eventually the road just kind of becomes a forest at that point. So typically, our department would rather see roads like that vacated if we could be guaranteed everyone still has access as opposed to level C gated.
Okay, and then what she talked about, providing their own gates, um, obviously not in our roadways, but if we did vacate it, then they could definitely gate it and do what they wanted.
Yes, then it would revert back to, the, the old rights would revert back to landowners at that point.
On the adjacent area?
On the, yeah.
Okay.
Which could, could even more challenging because some lots might cross the road. I mean, without looking deeper into it, you know, you have, you have instances where an entire property will cross the entire rideaway. So now, you know, you're, you're limiting access to different individuals out there. It can get, uh, pretty tricky.
Okay, so having heard more about this, um, I would like to table this until more research can be done with looking into vacating this um, as opposed to just turning it to a level C road and gating it.
And I could recommend that we just, which would be similar to tabling it, we could go to the second or third readings, um, which would be kind of the same, same thing. In this case, since there is some contention out there.
I'm going to have to go back to the public, yeah.
Yeah, go back to your...
Right, that was discussed. Okay. Would you like to come back up and, yeah, explain some more, yeah?
Herself, myself, and the people on the other end that have the farm, I, we have no intention of blocking access to the road. We'll open the gates when it's dry. That will eliminate tearing up the road, it would eliminate, um, all the noise and distractions when we're trying to sleep at night, um, as opposed to closing it. And if, if you ever had somebody, like, it'd be like driving a four-wheeler in your backyard at night while you're trying to sleep, or trucks getting stopped and yelling and partying and...
I think all the agricultural people that would have access right there, I mean, everybody has land on that road.
Assigned.
Had assigned it and they all have the rights to get in. So I don't think anybody else probably comes up to that road that would have access.
Everybody that's buds up to this road has signed the thing with, wanted to see this happen. And you could still get your, uh, road grader down there to straighten the road up whenever, you know, it's dry down. Communicators. And we have locks, each individual landowner and the county, uh, had our keys to the gate, but we're willing to open it when it's dry because we live right there and you can see it.
How, how does usually a level C work with that?
I think we need to take the veins on address and highlight and map up and make sure there's no gaps in the areas. And then we can continue to visit for the, at the next meeting and see if there's any gaps left in the area. And I think we got contact info.
Yeah, we, we've got signatures from everybody, um, what's that called, Emerald Valley? That, that house, and then...
Or call the secretary.
Zelias that have the ditch chump and then the gentleman behind me that just bought the land.
Okay. Do you understand the difference between turning it to a level C or vacating it? Vacating it would revert any of the adjacent, uh, landowners around it. They would then get that land and then you guys could control that how you want it. Gate it, making it, whatever you want to do with that. So, um, would that be an option that would be super? Okay, so that, that's the road that we're thinking of going down instead of turning it to a level C. So that way you wouldn't have to always contact the engineering time you wanted to do something to that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, converting it to a level C just lowers it so far on the priority list, uh, when we do have address weather conditions. Those roads just don't get hit, um, because we're trying to keep up with the level Bs and level As. And so that's why I kind of mentioned that you tend to get overgrown and then essentially it's the same as us closing the road down because you have to spend, um, a lot more money to clear it out as it overgrows, you know, as that gets passed. Thank you.
And there is maintenance on that broken house. I have a level C, I saw somebody last week go down, first kind of like, in here, in the winter, nobody could tell. So...
I push it to be in my driveway, the snow would leave it, we had a tree down for over two months. I didn't chop it off because I was like, well, that stops them from going...
And they went around it anyway.
And then they went around off in the grass, that, you know, somebody in line, I come and chop the tree down.
Well, would that mean that they would, those landowners would then be able to control the access? But anyhow, should we give that to David and then we...
Oh.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
And thank you also for coming in and, um, coming with some solutions as well.
Well, thank you for hearing us, we really would appreciate it. If you have a big mine lot, please live there.
I did take pictures just last week. Yeah, we wanted to see that. This is just for my, it doesn't make any difference to you.
And then procedurally, Don, what, um, I mean, it seems to me like, are we still hoping?
We're still hoping.
It seems like some of the commentary on it is to move towards vacation of the road, vacating the road, that's a better term. And, uh, I'm not sure if we can have a motion today.
How, how we move forward?
I suggest you sit in the second meeting.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we, we just want to take our time to guarantee that everyone has that access and I think that's...
I want to, yeah, I absolutely want to make sure that anyone that could be affected by any of the decisions on it are all signed off on it. If there's even one that says, hey, I know one place, I wanted to be a level B for whatever reason, then we have to consider that as well.
Yeah, they've all signed off on it. And the only people that access that road to get to their house are, the rest of them either in our Deer or Graham. So it's just our farm, the guy behind me, his, his, and then Zelias can come either side.
I've not seen any future problems here. I think it'll work out, it's just we want to make sure we do it correctly. But I'd be in favor of doing that, I appreciate, um, if you won't bring some ground rock and aid and solutions to the, to the one. Granted, if it does get vacated, it's less, less kind of roads to be taken, that's bad.
Well, we would sure appreciate it, thank you so much, and thank you, sir.
And we'll look at the mud tracking issue too, there might be a way to kind of help that. Uh, we don't want mud tracked on the, our road either, so we'll take a look at that.
Good, thank you.
I move we go back to the regular talking.
Second.
Shaw?
Aye.
Dico?
Aye.
MacIntyre?
Aye.
Don, we need a motion.
We need a motion to sit in the second meeting.
That's all we need, I'm going to move that.
Let's give them, let's give them ample time so that we can cross-reference all homeowners that are adjacent or, but the road is questioned. So set it out, maybe two meetings, maybe at least two weeks.
So the next one would be, are we going to be first meeting?
I think that's...
Too soon. Too soon?
Yeah, let's do the second.
Good order, do you have... Are we due for a meeting?
Um, second.
Sho?
Aye.
The cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
All right, item number six is public hearing regarding secondary roads' five-year construction plan with possible action. I would accept a motion to go into public hearing.
So, move.
Sho?
Aye.
The cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
And our engineers presently... Need to wait for him?
So, this is the five-year construction plan. What we're doing with this is once... You get guys doing previous today, I mean, this is our submitted to the state. A lot of the information is already been approved at previous meetings, you've approved the budget. We did an amendment in January, that's all the same information. The only change from that amendment in January to now is we show fiscal year 2024. And in 2024, we have that as all zeros. And that's just to let our balance, balances come back up. That's not to say there's not going to be projects in that year. It's just the fifth year, so we want to see how the balance kind of projects into that year. And I can take any questions on that.
Are we doing this time later?
Uh, this is submitted late. This is two weeks late. We failed to publish the public hearing in a timely manner. So, I accept full responsibility for that.
You haven't been busy or anything, have you?
No, no.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so if you want to come up and address the five-year plan, now would be the time to do so. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Kelly Penman. I live at 15293 Arthur Trail. I think it is kind of, you can move these hearings around whenever you want. Today was supposed to be a pub... we were supposed to be setting a public hearing for this and you guys moved it ahead. I feel that somebody here wasn't doing their job. It should have been... Should have set the public hearing at the next meeting on May 21st so that the public can come here to see what's going on. I also, in this five-year plan, I asked six weeks ago for a five-year plan. And I'm still waiting on a plan for the secondary roads. This has nothing to do with part of the secondary roads.
It has everything to do with our secondary roads.
Well, it has nothing to do with the gravel in the secondary roads.
Yes, it does. And it outlines our projects.
Pardon me?
It outlines our projects in which we're planning for each year, advised by a five-year projection.
And the five-year plan that we asked for 12 years ago, I'm still asking for it, Chris, to assess our roads for five years for the secondary roads.
Okay.
This is a secondary road. The most in here covers the bridges and relays some concrete or oversurfacing. This has nothing to do with the five-year plan. I believe you're wanting to do a special bond for the taxpayers of Warren County to pay to get our roads up to a level A road or the county road standards. In 2016, you guys gave us this. You were here on how we are to maintain our roads in Warren County. This hasn't been bothered at all. That's why we're where we're at. You said that we didn't even use our cap for a couple of years on the budget for the roads. Where did that money go?
It went into savings, I believe.
So, we have this money that we can put on the roads?
No, it's...
Six weeks, six weeks have passed and you guys have not come out there and done anything on our roads as part of putting any rock down. I can drive around Warren County and I see where there's rock getting put down. I don't know why you're not collecting to come out in our area to do something with our roads. You have a major issue on Blue and 150th. You guys were ignoring until there's an accident or something happens. I'm asking you, you promised the Northern Warren County Fire Department you would fix the roads. This boy's not here today because he's probably fighting fire and helping people that you promised to fix our roads. Six weeks have gone by. You have not brought one load of rock out there to put on these hills in our road.
One rock?
You've done brick. You've done brick on Blue and 150th. You've not put any rock on Blue or 150th.
We have to go by priority. We have a whole county to take care of, sir.
I would like to show my priority movie that I did last time where a gentleman got five loads of rock on his one house dead-end road. And your engineer says because he needed his garbage picked up, got five loads of rock.
He needs the same access.
It's still, would you please wait on talking?
Sure.
You have your time and I get done, I'll take on it. He put five loads of rock. We went and done garbage pickup over five weeks on our secondary road and still they have not brought any rock out.
Yes, sir, and your roads also were not built properly back when they were built, so there is not proper drainage and that is the issue. But based on how much money we collect every year, it is not in our budget to go through and do a complete overhaul to redo your section of roads.
I have here in front of me 62 homes, 25 properties on two, a little over two miles of road. Our assessment on our homes is over $19 million and we can't get any rock at all. I know only 30, only 33,000 dollars goes toward our road. Which goes to everybody, 600 miles of road. If we would quit dumping rock on these floodplains that we have on 140th, we live on a dead-end road because they shut the road off 50 years ago because it is a floodplain and they took the bridge out. Now, if you go over 140th, you guys spent thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars, on floodplain. From the banner pits back around the car lot, the bottom road, you guys had it all closed off. You spent millions of dollars on rock over there over the years. Why aren't we closing some of these floodplain roads off and making it one way in and one way out like you do everybody else? I understand there was only three home, in 1950, there were only three homes out there. And now there's 62. We should have been doing something years ago. But we did not spend our cap two years ago for two years when we should have probably been working on this road while you were in office and he was the engineer.
And I voted against that budget too.
I understand that, but we have money here now, but why can't we use that money?
What money do we have, sir?
What if you didn't spend it?
We have been spending money, though.
Apparently somewhere else.
Yes, you're right. But we have a whole county to take care of.
You've got 600 miles. We get, you say we're getting another million dollars the first of July?
For the engineer's budget for rock, that's going to go to buy two more belly domes because we have one and three personnel to drive them. And that, over time, we will be saving millions of dollars in hauling in our own rock. So, that will equate to a savings over time. So, yes, we have to have an upfront investment before we can truly see the savings.
You know, I look down the road as people, you guys are still, people are still building in the country. And we've been told everything from engineers down there, we shouldn't live out there. The roads are there. It's Warren County's responsibility to maintain these roads to a road that we can travel in and out on. And for the last three years, they're a lot worse now than the last three years ago when we were in here. Not long, 12 years ago, when we wanted to do something with the road, when your own engineer came up with a plan to fix the road. He was your engineer at that time to fix this two-point, 2,000 feet or something, 2.1 or 2.2 miles to fix this road. Over the 12 years, there really hasn't been a lot done and it has deteriorated, cleared out. 12 years ago, these roads was not like this. Now, I've been out there for 22 years and every year they're getting worse. I mean, I don't know, when are you guys going to get, you're waiting on the frost boils to lift? Well, you're waiting on it to quit raining. Then you say you don't have equipment to haul the rock. Then you don't have the money to quit the rock down. Where are we going to start and when are we going to start addressing the roads?
We're starting it at the next budget. I just told you, you're buying those belly domes and that will, over time, decrease the amount of money we have to spend to haul in our own rock and then we can purchase more.
You said in a Facebook post here just the other day, you're asking the Warren County residents to give you five years to 10 years to get their county roads back to county specs. You're wanting us to wait five years for you to come and rock our road?
Yeah, okay. I think you're talking about two different situations here. You're talking about the overall county roads, the rural roads.
Well, that's 600 miles.
And you're talking about your area specifically.
I drove on, I drove on a lot of our county roads. And they're all, they need a lot of work.
Exactly.
I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that.
It doesn't happen over...
I didn't ask for our road to be paved today. I'm asking for our road to be brought up to a, to a level A road that we don't have to drive a mud road in and out. And that's what we're asking for out there. And I know Heather down here gets so many calls and I know you argue back and forth with a couple of people and I... We can't argue about what's been going on.
Exactly.
We need to step forward. We need to get out there and maintain the road and put some rock on our road. You said in a post earlier this year that if you had to, if we had to dig some of this up and put some rock in or you talk to the engineer. This has been two months ago you gave me that message. We've done nothing.
We are waiting on some attorneys to get back to us about specially assessing your area specifically.
Yeah, because you want us, you want us, you want us 62 homes to pay to fix our road.
It doesn't benefit any of the rest of the county. And it wasn't built right, so if we were to bring it upright, we need that extra money.
140th, 140th was built in a floodplain. It still is a floodplain. You rock that road every time it rains. So, why are we rocking 140th in a floodplain?
There are people who live out there and that is a through-traffic road.
I think you're, I think you're kicking the ball down the road on us.
I am not. In fact, I have a meeting coming up with your homeowners. So, we are going to be addressing this.
I asked you to table our next meeting. You said you had a proposal when you called me the next morning after the last meeting. And I said, I would like for you to bring it to the May 21st meeting so that you could talk to the public.
It needs to be more in a...
And then you said, and then I said that we would open this up to the public or open this up to the county. He said, no, we really don't want to have the whole county out there because we're going to have to just deal with just us. You sidestepped me from my questions and my answers and you went to another person to ask him to get us all together out there. You sidestepped me.
No, I did not sidestep.
You stepped out. You never returned me. You were going to bring a proposal to the board on May 21st, you said.
No, I said I'd put you on the agenda.
Yeah, but you had a proposal that morning when you called me and I said, no, I want to get on the agenda.
You are taking so much time on an issue that we need to work through aside from the county.
That's right.
This is a huge county issue. We're talking about the five-year plan. You're talking about your specific neighborhood and road. I want to address that and I will address that, but not in this setting.
And you want, and you want, and you want us to pay for it. You want us to bring our roads up to what they should be? By what your work roads are right here, our road is nothing like what this should be.
You're right.
And I'm right. And whose fault is this?
Whoever built it in the very first place.
No, no.
But it is not the rest of the town.
You run for this seat and say you would help fix the roads. You three are in charge of what's going on in our county now.
We are.
You three are.
Yes.
I mean, you said before you're only one person on a three panel that you could never vote because these guys always voted against you. Not you, Aaron, I'm sorry. And that's why you were left out. You never did vote with them. I think, I think Aaron's on, he needs to see the county fixed. He's got a plan. You want to do a special bond referendum to fix the roads plus build this new building that you guys want. You guys want $7 million for the building, I think. How much do you want for a bond referendum to fix the road?
We haven't, we haven't come up with all those numbers yet.
When? We had the last meeting, you had a proposal. You stood up here and gave it to me. I would like to have a copy of those sheets of paper that you had and used up here last week.
You mean about three weeks ago?
No, at the last meeting that we had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, as I've stated previously, these are budgets and items previously approved at public meetings. And all are welcome to attend and get a comment on. The only change is fiscal year 2024, so this is strictly submitted to the state. I can point out in the five-year plan, it shows over the course of five years, you show 7.325 million total in construction over those years. Only about $375,000 of that is local dollars. So, we're talking rock, we're talking local dollars, we're talking this, we're talking different pots of money. So, when he's making those comments, it really is apt as horned because we're talking about a different document here that does deal in more of the farm and market money, the special funding, the swap funding, the highway bridge programs, federal aid, traffic safety program, all that stuff, so... Thank you.
Skip Phillips, 1341 Brom Street. We had a discussion at the work session last week regarding doing a study of the Greenville Plaza area. I have documents, I should... I'm reading my copy here. Apparently, there is a technology out there that does ground penetrating radar systems so that we can actually do a sonar-type thing of the ground to find where the voids are. The average cost for that is by acre, represented by a millimeter foot of street. The acre is $2,350 per acre. Fortunately, I do have a copy of the original documents for the roads. I was able to measure basically just scaling off the footprint. The roads are 28-foot back to back, so I used a 26-foot scan width for the roads. There is approximately 1,000, no, 1,668,680 square feet of roads. There is 35.36 acres. So, the cost to do just the Greenville Plaza area is $75,323. Hills and Coventry is an additional $14,699.91, which is a total cost of $90,022.91. What this does is it will then tell us where the voids are. It will tell us where the sewers are that are crossing those voids. And those are the only sections of sewer that we have to be concerned with because those are the areas we're concerned are leaching the soil from under the roads, causing them to collapse. That's... You all have a copy of it and hopefully, I don't know if this is the correct form to do it or if it should have been the public hearing, but I thought I should hopefully get it on the budget so that we can get this room fixed since there are 650 houses in the area and the loads, the roads are literally collapsing. A garbage truck did fall down with six-foot holes, six-foot deep. I'm going to do this. So, you have a copy of your... Thanks.
Those comments are something we could hopefully kind of address for next year's budget. These are still numbers based on the budget that was approved at the beginning of this year. And also, Mr. Penman did stop by the office this morning and pick up two copies of these. We have to print them off the internet because they're draft copies. So, and then every year, we update the website with the current five-year program, so the information is always there. You just actually have to look for it. Thank you.
It's probably afternoon now, so good afternoon. Natasha Adams, I'm a resident at 4604 20th Avenue in Norwalk. Actually, we just felt it coming about two miles. I'm here representing some of our neighbors and if we, if they would have all known that this was happening today kind of short notice, I'm sure there would be many more represented. But I just want, you know, listening to Kelly this morning, I want to be clear on the fact, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, it is not just his neighbors. It is not just his neighborhood. I mean, it is, Warren County roads are beyond subpar. And I understand budgets, I'm a business owner, I get it. But this can't wait. I mean, I hope you understand that beyond garbage vehicles falling in six-foot holes, we have school buses that either A, can't come down the roads on a regular basis or they have gone into the ditch a couple of times this season. I have taken upon myself to try and educate myself as much as possible on county road maintenance. Our roads, it's classic school book. If you go through the U.S. Department of Transportation, their latest manual on gravel road maintenance and the EPA maintenance, classic failed roads, they're failed. I mean, we have, on any one of our roads, we have berms. There is no crown on our, there's no gravel. But it's, when we do see a grader, I'm not sure what they're grading because there isn't anything there to grade. I mean, it's, we've not been able to get down our road many times in the last year and it gets worse and worse and worse every year. It's a matter of time before there are accidents. I mean, this isn't a matter of just, you moved to a gravel road as we did, you have expectations that it's not gonna be a paved road. It's beyond not being a paved road. It's, you can't get home, you can't get out of your home. I mean, we have many elderly people, but, you know, when we first moved there, there were lots of homes where we are just upcoming. But I'm sure you're all well aware of what is predicted to happen there. We have on our road, though, three new, brand-new homes on our road. And the travel, the amount of vehicles that are out there today versus even five years ago is astronomical and it's only growing, growing. So my point is, this can't wait. Whatever the answer is, we have to act now. I mean, it can't, when I hear a five-year plan, when I see a five-year plan that doesn't address really our roads, I'm thinking, my God, you know, that's scary. It's very, very scary. I mean, so I just urge you, and as I will, I will be more active, I promise, you'll see me a lot more. And I'm certain you'll see our residents a lot more. This has to, this has to happen. Thank you.
I think it's worth noting the actual scope of the spring call events, that it's occurring statewide and even regionally throughout states such as Nebraska where a lot of the bridges have failed. I encourage them to continue and keep contacting our office and see what we can do on a county level, but at what point does the conversation shift to a state focus as well and determine how those dollars basically trickle down to our cities and counties? So I just wanted to, I mean, all US county engineers talk, we all know we're in the same boat here and we just want to be clear that this is not specifically a neighborhood or Warren County issue. This is happening on a much larger scale. Thank you.
Ron Wyckoff, twenty-four thirty-five hundred fifty-third Avenue, Carlisle. Much of what I was going to say has been said. I'd like to maybe just emphasize a few points that have been referred to. The effect of our roads having no gravel, and it truly is no gravel, but I sympathize for others in the same situation. We do have a crisis. It literally affects our lives in ways that I never thought mud would. But as a neighborhood in discussions, we've talked about anti-lock brakes being messed up, brake pads being infected. The mud clings onto the truck. My truck happens to be new, I buy a new truck very often, but hey, for Christmas, new truck. It just clings there and it rides around with me as a reminder that our roads are bad. Aliment, a couple of bad rims, tire balances, things like that. Our trucks and vehicles cannot possibly go into our garage juice because literally we drop mud in there in a rain that you can't believe. We literally chuckled when David said, you know, we're sensitive to the mud being trapped because you got to come out to our area and maybe the Collins area also to see how much mud actually is trapped into our homes, getting in and out of our cars. I have to pick up the running boards, I have to jump over it, otherwise stepping in. And this is in a half mile, guys, at ten to fifteen miles an hour. If the truck was perfectly clean at ten to fifteen miles an hour to get home, I got that much mud in my car. So you jump over it and I'm not that tall, maybe I don't jump that high, but the back of my pants oftentimes are a casualty of that jump. As stated, we have in homes, no law enforcement, we have no emergency vehicles, no fire, no bus, no garbage pickup. I don't think anyone bought a home out there expecting to have to encounter or endure those type of things. This year, we just all got property evaluations that are going at ten percent or more. It's kind of like a little salt in the wound. We're here and we're struggling with additional costs and trying to keep our homes, our cars and things presentable and preserved. And we say our homes are more valuable and I would say any real estate agent that would come out there and see our roads would disagree. It's a, man, who's to live here? I have a friend, very professional guy, he told his wife, he said, if I die, I promise you this, I won't sell the house before the funeral, but right after the funeral, let's go. And then it's basically because of the roads. So we have a lot of issues there that I think actually translate into county liability. I can't help but think that the county who's admitting these are Level A roads and not providing Level A roads should an accident happen, a fire attack of some sort, there would be liability on the county's part to step forward and say, yes, we were at fault, we couldn't provide those services. I've lived on these roads for sixty years. I know I lived thirty, no, I've lived on them for sixty years. You lived out pretty quick there. You guys lived there, I heard. Went out there in nineteen fifty-nine and they aren't worse than they've ever been. They really are. Now, the traffic, I don't know if that's still disputed, but it's a very high-traffic road. I'll be happy to sit there with someone and count what we ask for traffic count. I think we got one from nine o'clock in the morning to three o'clock in the afternoon. That's not a very good representation of the traffic that goes up and down, morning and night, schools, and many homes, sixty-two homes there. Some homes have four drivers in them, high school kids and lawn hogs working. So if there's anything we can show you that would help in looking at the more severe areas. I know we had the Maiden Street paved. I don't know what the traffic is of that. I know the airport's on that. I don't know if there's other reasons that that was paved, but it's two point seven miles, twenty-five homes. The airport's about a half mile off the highway. I can see maybe paving to that, continuing that on out to the expense that you made us aware of, how much seven-inch concrete cost. I don't know. Are we putting everybody in the right spots? And when we see buildings condemned, you know, breaking mortar breaks more buildings than more companies than anything. And when we're gonna put a lot of money in these trucks and more people, are we gonna use them efficiently? Just buying trucks that'll carry a whole lot more for load, fine. Are we gonna do load after load after load? Is that truck going to be moving? If you buy equipment and it's not rolling all the time, it's costing you money rather than subbing it out. And those are the things that I hope that we're looking very closely at is doing things efficiently because as a business, you can just kind of look at it and say, oh, that'd be so great. But man, when it sits there, it doesn't do any good. How many people sold the boat after about two years? Because I didn't allow that boat, I'm not using that, I'm not letting that money sit there. Same thing in business with your equipment. And condemning a building, you know, I see something in here, I think it's up next for condemning it. I hope it's condemned properly, that people look at it and say, no, renovation would be a better, wiser way to spend the money. We all like new and improved, but can always have it. So appreciate you letting me speak and I really, really want to stress, we live with this mud in a way that we never thought we would be living in it. And literally, no rock on the road, no rock on the road. And in, like I said, sixty years of being out there, we're the worst they've ever been. Thank you.
I don't have anything else on the plan. I recommend approval of this fiscal year twenty twenty five-year plan for submitted to the DIT.
Moving to the regular session. Second. Show.
Aye.
Duke Cook.
Aye.
Mackin Car.
Aye.
Okay, take the motion regarding the secondary five-year construction.
Motion to approve.
One second.
Show.
No.
Duke Cook.
Aye.
Mackin Car.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, item number seven, request update of nine-one-one communication system. Is that right? Yep. ISICS, statewide interoperable communication system overview presented given by Brian Flynn.
So yes, hello, my name is Brian Flynn and I work for Mobile Solutions. I appreciate you letting me come in today. I was asked to come in and give an overview of the statewide ISICS radio platform and then also what that means for Warren County. And a little project update of the nine-one-one communication systems here in Warren County. So I'll try to be brief, but really just wanna go over the state system and then also warn that itself, like I said, and then I'll obviously take questions during or after. So first of all, what is the state system? You can see there, ISICS is what it's been dubbed. That is the Iowa statewide interoperable communication system. It is governed by the ISICS board. The board consists of not only state agencies, but also local government agencies across the state. Basically, in two thousand and fifteen, the state really is trying to address radio communications, first responder communications across the state, realizing that there's a lot of disparate radio systems. The state was on one system and every single county was on a different system, even local agencies within a county. If someone would roll up on an interstate multi-car accident or even got into a school shooting, everyone is trying to communicate and talk and no one is on the same platform and with the same radios and the same technology, being able to talk with one another. So the state put out an RFP to build out a P twenty-five compliant radio system. What does P twenty-five mean? It really is a standard of specs and technology for radio communications, for first responders and nine-one-one communications. Mobile Solutions won that RFP and was contracted at the end of two thousand and fifteen and we are building out that state system now.
Can you define state?
Yes, so when I say state system, it really is, what I mean by that is statewide system. So ninety-nine counties, the spec that was put out there was being able to get ninety-five percent mobile coverage throughout the entire state. And so it's statewide system, I'm gonna kind of go over a little bit of that.
But it's, would the Iowa state control be correct?
Initially, it was, the Iowa state control's current, not radio system, which is called LEA, will be going away with the sheriff and law enforcement also use, and this will be replacing that. But it's also gonna be a backbone for counties like Warren County, other counties to be able to add on to to save costs from them putting in their own system. So Mobile Solutions, like I said, won that RFP, we are building that out now. As you can see, we put in thirty-six, actually thirty-seven now statewide systems throughout the country. So we definitely are experts in the field. What is that ISICS platform? It really is for interoperability, not just with the state, but also from county to county. It is the largest P twenty-five, like I said, system in the state. It's a starting point for operability. Just to let you know, for those that don't, so this is a mobile radio that would be in an ambulance, a sheriff's vehicle or a fire truck. The coverage of the state ISICS system is putting out would be ninety-five percent coverage of the entire state. So ninety-nine counties, ninety-five percent coverage. It's a bigger wireless radio in here than there would be in a portable handheld radio. So what does ninety-five percent coverage mean, Brian? What that means is that when Iowa state control or even the sheriff is in their vehicle and they key up on their mic on a mobile radio, that ninety-five out of one hundred times, they're gonna be able to get through and back to the local PSAP. That's what we're building out now statewide through the ninety-nine counties. So when we talk about, that's for interoperability, meaning to be able to talk with one another. It's a starting point for operability, but what does that mean operationally, day-to-day use? Day-to-day use, your EMAs, your first responders, your nine-one-one, your fire, people are using a portable radio that's on their hip when they get out of the vehicle or your law enforcement are using that. That's what we call a portable radio and that's gonna be more for, again, your operational, day-to-day use. So you have your in-car radio and then you have your portable radio. So when you get out of the vehicle, now you've got that portable radio on your hip to be able to talk to them. So some counties have decided where there's a need, such as your Warren County, it's been identified that the state system itself is not gonna be good enough in terms of to use day-to-day for every first responder. It is a good starting point for interoperability and it's a good backbone, but more infrastructure radios in terms of to have that operational, day-to-day use for portable radios needs to be put in place. The state system does have redundancy built into it. Uh, there are 92 sites throughout the entire state that is giving this baseline mobile coverage. Uh, there are three, uh, cores, uh, one, what those basically are is really just the brains, the computers of the system that everything is routed back to. There's three purely for redundancy, uh, you, you know, here in Iowa, we have floods, we have tornadoes. Uh, so if one were to go down, uh, the other, the second one would pick up. If that were to go down, the third one would pick up. Most states only have two, so Iowa, uh, went a little extra and have three. It is in the 700, 800 megahertz frequency band. What that means is it's not on VHF, um, older technology and the state system actually is in 700 specifically. And that is only for public safety use. So it's not going to be sharing that as the current, um, radio frequencies are being shared, uh, with anybody else that really wants to get on it, it's not. So again, kind of touched on this, there's 90 plus sites throughout the entire state. Um, all but one have been completed. Um, coverage testing has been going on in the fall and into the spring. Um, the current, um, system itself is supposed to be, um, basically accepted by the ISICS board here within the next 60 days, we're being told, um, for those 92 sites. And like I said, multiple counties, um, have decided to add what we call local system enhancements or added infrastructure to go on to that baseline coverage. Um, to enhance their operational day-to-day use in their own county.
Can you say site, can you define that?
Yep, absolutely. So this is what 92 sites look like across the state for the ISICS system. Uh, as you can see, there's, so there's 95 counties, or excuse me, 99 counties in Iowa. Um, the spec was 95%, again, mobile coverage throughout the entire state. So there is not one, one site per county, there's several counties that don't have a state ISICS tower. Um, there are some counties that have two or three. Um, but that, that's a spec that we were given, so we, our engineers, uh, put in a lot of work to run different coverage maps and modeling, and this is what we came up with. What you're seeing here, the green lines that are going between the sites, those are microwave backup. What that really is, is that's that resiliency, that's that, uh, reliability, that's getting each of those towers connected to other towers and back to those three state cores throughout the entire state.
So okay, when you say global coverage to the pose to, uh, handheld radio, Iowa statewide control doesn't go into homes.
Correct.
But our law enforcement within Warren County do, so that's why we need to build extra towers for our system.
That's correct. Again, this is mobile coverage throughout the entire state. So that would be, again, the sheriff or Iowa statewide patrol or anybody that has a P-25 compliant radio that is also on the system. Cause even though it hasn't been accepted, it's being used and it's actually being used, I'll touch on this by Warren County today. In the vehicle, that coverage can be used, but when you get out of the vehicle, and now I'm out of the vehicle and I'm, I mean, running somebody down in a cornfield or I'm fighting a fire in someone's house or I'm in a bar or at a home for domestic, I mean, abuse or call, now I'm not getting that rate, that mobile coverage. Now I'm, I mean, just using a smaller antenna and a smaller radio and there's, I'll kind of break it down to you. So mobile coverage is kind of that top layer, bigger radio within a car. I get out of the car, firefighter, law enforcement, now I'm using portable coverage on the street. But now this goes, the, the coverage for this gets even worse if I go into a building. So whether it's a home, whether it's a school, commercial business, then that coverage gets even worse. So to, to your point, um, Crystal, that's adding that infrastructure to be able to increase that portable on-street and portable in-building coverage is what is needed, um, here in Warren County for day-to-day operations for 911 first responders. So this is a quick map of what those 92 sites across the state is. That green is showing that 95%, again, mobile coverage, so in-car coverage. White is where, uh, you're seeing that that is not hitting that 95%. Now kind of a quick, um, note on here, this is not like cellphone coverage, we all have cellphones here where you either have coverage or you don't, right? You, you, you miss that, get out of a tower, you go somewhere and your call gets cut off. That white area is not like that when it comes to land mobile radios. Really what it is, is we're coloring in green where we're guaranteeing 95 out of 100 times they key up on that, that mic that's getting through back to the PSAP. The white area, it could be 94 times, it could be 90 times. In the river bottom somewhere, it could be five times or zero times. I mean, every, um, the state agencies and county by county, you know where those areas, I mean, are at. But overall, that, that's what that's showing is 90, 95% for the green, white does not mean no coverage. This is what a, a tower looks like. Um, typical tower for the state that's been put up is, is anywhere from 300 to 400 feet. One of the things that you're seeing here at the base is there is a security perimeter fence that's on, in there. There is propane, um, backup for if power were to be cut off. And there also is a climate-controlled shelter that's there for all the radio equipment and humidity control and things like that for the radio equipment there. And then you're also seeing the vertical antennas at the top and then the microwave dishes, they're kind of toward the top and about half, three towards the way up. Those are those green lines you saw on the previous map. So in terms of the overview for the statewide system, not necessarily to Warren County yet, on the left is what the ISICS, uh, board and the state is maintaining and paying for. Not county by county, specifically Warren County. So they're taking care of those 92 sites for that baseline mobile coverage. They're taking care and maintaining the three, uh, brains or the, or the cores of the system. Their own statewide, own radios for DOT, DPS, Iowa statewide control, uh, DNR. They're maintaining all that microwave connectivity with, I mean, those green lines back. Um, when they take, uh, acceptance of the system here in the next 60 days or so, what that really means is that Motorola has coverage tested and said, I mean, here we've dotted the i's and crossed the t's. We've done everything that we were contracted for. The state ISICS board takes ownership of that. That's when their 10 years of hardware and software, um, maintenance and upgrades starts. Uh, so that wasn't over the last three or four years of build-out, that is starting when they accept it. And what does that mean? So that was a separate contract that was put up. Basically what that did was that forced the need for the PSAP or the dispatch, uh, for 911 communications in Warren County to be moved from across the street, uh, in the old courthouse and jail to, uh, the room here, uh, adjacent to us here in the, in the county administration building. Because of that, the old consoles and a lot of the old radio and that was, and radios that were in that dispatch and, and PSAP were deemed not really to be able to be used, uh, or be able to survive, really a move over. Um, so this board, uh, the previous board, excuse me, had approved about $400, $450,000 to move forward purchasing new Motorola consoles and to have that, um, have them installed here and have that PSAP moved over here. Part of that was, um, a couple of additional consoles to make that move seen was back to the new death center here in a couple of years. So some of that is already in that to do so, not all, but some. The new consoles are, because the state ISICS system, um, is being built out, like I mentioned before, a lot of agencies are using it now, even though it hasn't been accepted by the ISICS board here in the next couple of months. Um, so those consoles are directly connected through fiber, ICN, uh, communication network fiber to the three master cores. And immediately, um, the agencies in, in the county that have the P-25 compliant radios were able to utilize, um, that mobile coverage that the state system has already put in. So the decision at that time, um, by the 911 and EMA commission and boards was to change the scope of that phase two with the consultant to move away from an RFP, uh, spec and move to a statement of work with Motorola. And the reason what that was done was because of the Motorola consoles that were already, um, purchased, because of the Motorola dual-band radios that a lot of law enforcement throughout the county had already purchased. And Motorola building out the state system and the, uh, desire to, for the county, um, first responders to be on the state system. Um, it was basically changed in a spec for us to be able to hold us accountable to present a proposal for, and then, uh, again, similar to the state, to be able to dot i's and cross d's to prove out that we're going to do what, what Warren County potentially would, would contract us to do. So unfortunately since then, um, the Simpson law repeater, which again is going to let everyone kind of know what that means, is your current VHF, uh, system. Again, that just over time legacy 30, 40-year-old system that's kind of pieced together as needed. Uh, that one law repeater here in town went down. So in effect, there were no way, no ways for, uh, police or sheriff to be able to communicate with each other if you were calling 911. So because of that and because the county had already bought the consoles, law enforcement in the county already had some of these radios and the ISICS system, uh, was very near completion, but built out enough to utilize, to use. Uh, law enforcement in the county moved over operationally. So again, day-to-day, not just for occasional use, onto the ISICS platform. And they're still using that today. They have that option for the current VHF, uh, system. So kind of walked down it, so about a month and a half ago, two months ago, the EMA commission voted to move forward with getting, um, new county-wide infrastructure project moving, uh, for, and that statement of work was given to Motorola for us to put together a proposal. What would it look like to increase the coverage in the county on top of the baseline coverage of the state system to get operational day-to-day use of portable radios outside of the vehicle, on-street coverage? But then also in-building coverage, I'm going in to the communities that have schools. So, um, so that's what we were given, that's what we have put together and our engineers have designed to. We presented that, um, about a month ago, two, or a few weeks ago, and related cost to the EMA commission. Uh, the EMA commission is working with Omnicom, the radio consultants, uh, to finish out that, that phase two of your contract you already have, to be able to go through and pick through to, to see, um, if that's truly what, what they, you guys want, uh, first responders want and need and kind of vet through that. There is a meeting on calendar next Tuesday, uh, with that EMA commission, I think, to go over, uh, some of those findings with the consultant and, uh, the first responders that are there. And at that point, I believe, um, they would have the final, um, number and go to present them back to you as board supervisors, um, for, uh, possible funding of the project. So what, what did that, what did that proposal look like? I'll just give you a really high level overview, just because again, it's not 100% complete through the consultants and EMA commission. Um, it is a seven-site design. So the spec that we were given was 97% portable on-street coverage. Again, what does that mean, Brian? It means a first responder is getting out of their vehicle and has a portable radio on their hip. That 97% of the area in Warren County, 97% of the time, they're going to be able to get, they key up and they're going to be able to hand that to the PSAP. It also added the in-building coverage, again, now I'm getting going to where school locations are. So, uh, that's what me walking into a school, whether it's a fire, whether it's a, I mean, God forbid mid-school shooting or whether it's just dare officer, whatever. So the sev- seven, those seven sites, five of them are what we call greenfield towers. All that really means is a brand-new tower. Um, one would be placed in Macona, Norwalk, New Virginia, Martinsdale, and across the street here at Indianola at the future, um, Warren County Justice Center. And then two of those seven sites are actually existing towers in our current design. One is, um, the ISICS site that is south of town here, which, um, which we call the Hooper site. And then one is, uh, over, um, between Hartford and Carlyle, which is owned by Murphy Tower Construction. Again, the idea is trying to utilize existing towers to help save some of the cost of building all brand-new towers. Um, and then this is kind of just lists a few more of the things in terms of new shelters that go in and all those towers, the microwave back halls, connect them all, and then connect them back to the state system, uh, outwardly, and then the power and logging and things like that. Um, one of the benefits, again, doesn't always seem that way, but the cost savings to Warren County and the counties that are looking at putting in, uh, system enhancements like this, is you don't have to pay for your own core because the state has three of them. You're not paying for your, um, your own, um, the backup and things like that. I mean, you're able to utilize some of the dollars that have already been spent statewide. This is just a real quick visual representation, I mean, of what that looks like. And again, visualizing those green lines that were on the previous full statewide map. Top right-hand corner is your northeast of the county, that's that Murphy Tower site that's outside of Hartford. Um, and you've got a greenfield site to the left, that's going to be, uh, just on the east side of Norwalk. You've got the Indianola Justice Center, I mean, there in the middle. You've got a greenfield site over to the left, uh, which is going to be in your Martinsdale area. And this is the existing Hooper site. So the black towers are the ones that are identified as already there and the blue ones would be the newly constructed ones. We have, uh, the other one down in this New Virginia and then the one over in Macona. This is the Madison County site, so I mean, so you can see kind of a, a county line here. Really what that's being used to is that's getting to that microwave back hall ring to get back to the state cores. One of the things that we're also including, this was not in, um, the statement of work for us, well, we've started doing this in other counties, is we're including, um, basically you can kind of see there, it basically really is a mobile radio with a big orange button onto it. Um, to be placed one in every school within the county. So I think there were 11 plus or so that we have included here at no cost to the county. I mean, we feel this is important. Um, real, what does that do, Brian? So again, this is a mobile radio, so it can pick up on that mobile coverage that's in the county today from the state system without any additional local enhancements. And in, every school in every county could do their own thing, but really what seems like the prevailing way here in Iowa and Dallas County is kind of leading this, um, is it's placed there and in, in the time of need, whether it's a school shooting or anything like that. An office administrator in, I mean, a principal's office or a school administrative office can just quickly touch that. And it could be pre-programmed, automatically open a 10, 30-second, um, radio window to the sheriff's department, to first responders throughout the county. And so why would, why would that be 30 seconds? Well, I mean, think about that. You touch the radio and something's going on, now they can just talk out loud or yell and they'll be able to immediately know what's going on. Cause if that, if that's not there, what else would be, what's happening? You've seen it on the news, you've seen it across the country. It's depending on the level, I mean, of the school, elementary versus high school, it's everyone on their cell phones, I mean, trying to call home or trying to call 911 or, or on social media, just eating up all of that LTE broadband network. Uh, whereas this would be able to go right on that land mobile radio network and get back to first responders. So again, I touched on this in the state, 10 years of warranty, maintenance, upgrades. This is also included in our proposal for Warren County specifically, so those seven sites, all of the equipment in there, um, that, so just to kind of give you an idea of what timeline would be, like we said, for the state system, I mean, we're looking at, I mean, three and a half, four years. If Warren County were to move forward with our proposal tomorrow, it's a two-year aggressive build-out structure before this is done and that coverage is there, uh, that we're proposing, that we're promising. Um, cause it, it does take time, you've got five out of seven sites that have had to put brand-new steel up, um, and, and get that built, um, also work, things like that, things get put into it. So two years, let's say, again, it happens, two years from now, you, your system is here. It's, it's here, it's, it's delivered, everyone, the first responders are using it, Warren County residents can call 911 again and feel 100% confident that they're going to get responded to. The first year of maintenance and service is already included in our proposal. So now you got a two-year build-out and a one-year of included maintenance. Now, so three years from now, that's when the 10 years of the service upgrade and maintenance proposal would start. Uh, and again, on the same schedule as the state system, every two years from there, we would come out and we would, uh, touch every single one of those sites and put the latest software and firmware at those sites. You have the latest greatest shipping of what Motorola is putting out at that time. And it really is more of a And it really is more of a proactive stance now. Again, right now, you, there's, as far as I know, not really any budget for 911 communications as a whole to, if something were to break like that Simpson law repeater, it's calling up and sending a radio tech or a couple out there and trying to diagnose what it is and the time that the system's down and the cost involved with that. This is a proactive three hundred and sixty-five days, seven days a week, twenty-four seven, and Motorola would be proactively monitoring the system, be able to, a lot of cases, be able to fix it off-site without sending, I mean, a live person. But when a live person is needed, it's more, it's more surgery than anything. I mean, in terms of I can directly tell you exactly what's going to be wrong and go get it fixed. So this will be, is included in our proposal. Ryan, Ryan ran over on time a little bit there, but try to give you a lot of information in a short amount. Any questions or comments?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, consider IOT agreement for temporary detour routes on County Road R forty-seven from G seventy-six to G fifty with possible action.
After replacing the two bridges on County Highway R forty-five south of St. Mary's on the way to New Virginia there, this now makes the road have all the bridges on it for a emergency detour route for Interstate thirty-five. We are well aware of a plan being updated for this. This is simply just the formal action to allow the state to put those emergency detour signs back up on R forty-five with those bridges being replaced.
Can I accept a motion?
Second.
Shoal?
Aye.
Duko?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, item nine, discussion of condemned secondary road equipment storage facility with possible action.
So we do have the truck storage shed at the main shop side of town. There's a condemned building there. We'd like to demo at the beginning of this next fiscal year. And then we also need to consider putting up a new plug-in station for the vehicles to ensure that they hopefully start up in severe winter weather conditions. And I guess since I don't have, you know, control facilities, we do need permission for any thing we do want to do at our shop side and out of facilities.
What's the building called?
It's a truck, truck storage shed. It has rotting columns in it and complete section loss. So the columns can no longer bear those.
David, is that the building up far east?
Correct.
Is there anything stored there right now?
We try to keep equipment and personnel away from it.
Who are you proposing does the demolition work? Does that's something the county can do?
We've approached Herbert Construction and we feel they'd be a good fit because it's something they could fit into their, their schedule and do over time and get a better price on as opposed to saying it must be done immediately. And then that way, a lot of materials can be scrapped and salvaged and things of that nature to save costs.
Does the county not have the ability to demo the building themselves?
I would rather our equipment remain on the roads.
Estimated cost?
We don't have an estimated cost yet. I can give you a range. It could be anywhere from thirty thousand to over a hundred thousand. I don't see it being that high, but as of now, without getting any actual quotes in the door, I'm going to assume around the thirty, forty thousand range and upwards. And then a plug-in station could be around six, twenty thousand dollars, and these are both hard figures.
Do we have an official condemnation or something?
Yeah, architects and myself. And there's also a satellite facility we need to take a look at as well, a satellite show for possible demo as well.
Do you have a question? I accept a motion.
Some?
Or any?
Yeah, I'll, I mean, I'll second it, but I guess before we take an actual action on, it looks really like it's an agenda discussion, but before we take an actual action on building removal, I certainly always see some bids and if the number's closer to secondary or a hundred for sure, I think it'd make more sense to maybe handle that internally. I mean, it just depends on what we're supplied before we say, let's go from a hundred thousand dollars to a condemned building that was traditionally moved from. I'm fine with it.
Moving forward.
Would you be, what's the descriptions and a motion?
Yes, we need another motion.
All right.
Yes, so do a motion for what you want.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to proceed with bidding a bid for demolition of the East or a condemned building for possible or action at that. Bids would be okay. You said yes.
Yeah. You have a bid or quotes or quotes? Quote would be either or.
I second.
Are we even quoting bids?
I would recommend quotes for this type of work. And we can reach out to different local companies. We still feel that Herbert is probably going to give us the best price, but we can still reach out to other companies because we know they can fill in some time during the kind of the winter months when things slow down for bridge construction. They may even do a bridge repair for us.
I mean, it'd be my preference to bet up for, for anyone, especially the county who does any sort of demolition work. That's how we get the best price.
Yep. Kind of just had that we just focus locally though.
Shoal?
Aye.
Duko?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Item ten, consider appointment for Warren County Civil Service Commission with possible action. Thank you.
Would you like to open that up for any comment on this building?
No, sir. We don't have a public hearing except for that. They look into the legality of.
I hate the word ballpark figures. I agree with Aaron.
That's what the motion was. It was to accept quotes.
Yes. Thank you, Aaron.
See?
Yeah, let's go.
Who's addressing this?
Applications are in the books of the thirty-one. If anyone will apply for this position is here. Would you mind to step forward? And address the board. I'm showing you the two persons.
Look at the three. We've got Don Simpson from Norwalk, Jerry Young from New Virginia, and Stephen Fox from New Virginia.
He gets on the floor, so I would move to the Norwalk position.
Yeah, and I know Mr. Simpson for one time is a police officer. He did a great job. I think the other applicants are also very qualified and also do a very good job. I'll second that Don Simpson.
Okay, any other discussion? Tracy?
Shoal?
Aye.
Duko?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Moving on. Consider proclamation for May Mental Health Month, two thousand and nineteen with possible action.
Hi, I'm just bringing to you the mental health proclamation. Seventy years ago, Mental Health America started designating in May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm just trying to bring awareness for mental health as more of a health condition rather than something different. Really trying to recognize that it's just a health issue. So with that, I would ask that you consider the proclamation declaring May Mental Health Awareness Month in Warren County.
And the proclamation reads, Warren County, Iowa, Mental Health Month, May, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and wellbeing, whereas mental illness are real and prevalent in our nation. And half of us will have a mental health diagnosis at some point in their lives. Whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage this piece of time. And whereas engaging in prevention, early identification and early intervention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illness as they reduce the burden of other chronic conditions. And whereas there is a strong body of research that identifies behavioral risks and supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and wellbeing. And whereas with effective treatment, all individuals with mental illness, even serious mental illness, can make progress towards recovery and lead full, productive lives and are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas jails and prisons have often become the default places of custodial care for even non-violent people with mental illnesses. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental health and wellbeing for all. Therefore, I, Crystal McIntyre, do hereby proclaim May, two thousand and nineteen, as Mental Health Month in Warren County, Iowa, as chair of the Warren County Board of Advisors. I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommend our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. These steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses at all stages.
I would move the front of the meeting.
Second.
Shoal?
Aye.
Duko? Aye. McIntyre?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve, consider proposal of acoustical sound tones for boardroom with possible action.
Hi, everyone. I was about to come in and present for George. We have been looking into, the IT department and myself have been looking into the the echo that goes on in this room. I believe some time ago, they got a quote to update the sound system, just pretty much the audio, visual. So we thought we would try to address some of the issues with a cheaper method of putting some sound proofing barriers on the walls. Now, keep in mind, we are not sound technicians or anything like that. So we're kind of guessing on to see what we can, what would work and what won't work. We're just looking at the, at the walls currently, and these are some of the prices from different vendors that he's looked at. And so we're just kind of picking and choosing some sizes to just get something in here to start it. I do believe we're going to put something on the ceilings. With all the harsh surface, the noise just echoes around and you can't hardly hear it. And especially it gets tough in the back when, when you guys are talking up here and the people are talking back there, you just can't hardly hear anybody. So we just, we wanted to look at it, kind of give us some feedback and just for us to understand what direction we would, the board would like to go with, with this project, if at all.
Well, can you read off some of the prices?
Yes, the Acoustmatic, we have a box of twelve. They're two foot by two foot tiles. Those are four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then if we were to go with the same amount of tiles, twelve tiles, and they were all custom cut, which meant we would pick the sizes, we'd jump up to a thousand, a little over a thousand dollars. And then the Mersey, I think that's how you say it, box of twelve by twelve, or a box of twelve two-by-twos, that's five hundred and eighty-eight. Their custom cuts are a little over eleven hundred dollars. And then the GIK Acoustics, they are the cheapest so far. Two boxes of six, so same number of the two-by-twos are four hundred and fifty. And then one box of three two-by-fours would be a hundred and seventy-six ninety-seven. And then down here, they have, he has down here, custom cuts, not exact cuts. I'm not quite sure what that means. Those are five hundred and seventy-six. Then we have shipping and that on there. And then at the bottom of the paper, you'll see we have just some guesses on what we feel would work in the room. So we have some three-by-fives on the northwest wall, three-by-fives on the northeast wall, four-by-fives on the southwest wall, four-by-fives on the southeast wall, and three-by-three southwest corner and four-by-three on the southeast corner. So we felt this would be the cheapest route we could take without having to change out any type of speaker system or upgrade. I think even with an upgrade anyway, you'd probably still have to do something.
With the echo? Okay. Okay, what are your wishes on the board? Firstly, I like the JIK Acoustics. These things would be the cheaper. And those tiles would just go on the wall, just?
We would mount them to the wall. And we will try to pick colors that would more blend into the color of the walls. It won't be exact, but we're not going to try to pick anything too crazy. We have an array of colors in this building.
That at least gives us an idea of we're going in the right direction.
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm also supporting a few hundred dollars or a thousand dollars to improve the Acoustics here. I mean, I think that somehow down the road, we'll be addressing sound and other tech issues. We are going to need to, I mean, it's all the way common. It's like a key. And so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to do that at some point anyways. If that helps for a few hundred dollars, I would support it.
So I guess at this point, what I would ask is, would you like to give us a definitive amount? Then we could work within that parameter.
Oh, not to go over?
Right.
Certain amount?
Then that way, we would know that we'll just have to work within that.
So, okay, you're combining budgets with IT or IT is?
I, that I don't know. I mean, I imagine what will happen is we can split it.
We definitely will provide.
I would be equal with private labor, for sure.
Well, seeing that the cheaper one is under seven hundred, that may be a way of those.
I'm pretty okay with dealer's choice up to a thousand or eleven hundred dollars. Pick whichever money thinks the most cost-effective. If that's the cheapest one, great.
Well, that would give us a few more tile options. We actually, from the cheaper place, we could buy a few more tiles if we're helping.
A motion has been made for up to eleven hundred dollars in tile expenses that county employees remind the laborer. Second.
Shoal?
Aye.
Duko?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen on our agenda is consider approval of bids for landslide repair on project number LFM dash R six-three N dash seven X dash nine-one with possible action.
This is for repair work to the landslide located on County Highway R sixty-three just north of G twenty-four on the Duke Street. As part of this construction, the road will be down to one lane with traffic signals and it should be completed by the time ride right. And it should be completed by the time R I B R I rolls through on that project. You might see this south landslide on a future agenda that is mentioned through these meetings. That's been held up on, uh, to accommodate R I B R I, and we'll hit on that, um, fix as well. But for this project at hand, uh, it was programmed from our amendment, three hundred thousand. Received total of two bids on this project. The first bid was per construction at two hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. And the lowest apparent bidder is Elder Corporation at two hundred nine thousand dollars even. So we recommend a word of contract to Elder Corporation.
David, has, has Elder Corporation done prior landslide remediation on the county?
Uh, I, not in my five years here. Uh, we've worked with them on, on other projects, uh, we've had to crush material, things like that. Uh, they've always bid on a lot of work. Uh, this is just the first time, I believe, that I've seen them as the apparent bidder on a project. And it, it is right, it, it'll be right up their alley because, uh, most of the cost on this is gonna be importing, um, select bill materials and to stabilize the slope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What kind of construction are they doing on this, since this isn't the complete stabilization of this landslide? Or is it...
This is the complete stabilization of the landslide running south from a crossroad, concrete box culvert. And then just north of the concrete box culvert is a separate project, um, that we use, we're using dento construction on to help with a void near the, near the culvert or some build of the ditch, pretty easy. But this is ninety-five percent of the work out there.
Wow, okay, that's good. Okay, would entertain a motion to approve this?
I would move that we accept the bid from Elder Corporation for project number...
Second.
Shaw?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
McIntyre?
Hi. Okay, thank you. Next on our, uh, agenda is item fourteen, supervisor report. Supervisor Shaw?
Yes, um, I think needless to say, since we're on this meeting, I think it's like a free wish with many other meetings that, that we've taken action on. Outside of those, I've met with, uh, Chamber. He filed a beautiful R I B R I, and of course, numerous in all causes determined...
What is our...
Same, had some special meetings. We, um, had an, uh, NPO meeting. Uh, I met with our True North Insurance Provider regarding the healthcare and, uh, with the intention of including additional options for county employees going forward. Um, that, uh, were in the right direction, if we can discuss that, um, at a future date. Um, but it wouldn't be restricted to be, it just provides more options, like being health safe and, uh, kind of, well, I mean... Uh, multiple comments from public responded to, uh, grow some additional roads without the engineer. Um, had a special C I R meeting. Also spent some time in the last couple of weeks looking at, uh, some correspondence from some Madison residents regarding our county line share road. We do the twenty-eighteen agreement, so I'll do anything on that if you love it. Then we can address some color concerns.
All right, thank you. All right. My activities since our last regular board meeting are, uh, attended the Iowa Water Roll and Trunk User Group and, um, A D L, uh, H and Resources Board meeting. Attended an executive board meeting for the Fifth Judicial Department of Corrections. Several special board meetings, workshops and work sessions with the full board. Impact Personnel Committee Workshop. Uh, several meetings with Assistant County Attorney. Uh, Fifth Judicial Department of Corrections Regular Board of Directions Meeting, Directors Meeting. Met with Director of the Fifth, uh, Impact Board of Directors Meeting. A luncheon at Mygo Community Center. Met with Representatives of Rudolph Insurance. Attended a nine-one-one informational update with Director for nine-one-one Communications. Met with personnel to discuss updates in their departments. And Warren County Justice Center update by Dacey and Iain Shive. Lacona City Council Meeting, Spring Hill City Council Meeting. And numerous complaints and persons, email and by phone concerning roads and future plans of Warren County and Madison County. Um, we do have a bond coming up on November fifth. We are gonna include some projects for the roads, um, as well as the county shop. Uh, nine-one-one communication system presentation is given tonight, um, this morning. Been a long morning. Um, and we should be having a bond hearing coming up, uh, hopefully next month concerning that. The engineer shop, again, I talked about that. Courthouse and jail, or the Warren County Justice Center. As you can tell, demolition has begun. The abatement was done on the asbestos back in January. Um, Monday started the demolition of the building. Construction fencing, tree clearing, uh, the demo will be little by little for recycling purposes. Our stormwater relocation work was awarded to Vanderpool. And forecasted completion of the demo is in late July. Uh, the design work, uh, myself and other county representatives, uh, met with the construction manager and the architect to finalize the plans. The architect has construction documents, um, preparing them to consist of drawings and specifications for bid. Some design items have changed. And that includes staff parking location, exterior wall cladding materials, foundation design and future building addition strategies. Um, because R I B R I is coming to Indianola, um, this building will be the center of those activities on Tuesday. I don't have the exact date, Tuesday in July.
July twenty-third.
Twenty-third, thank you. And, um, our recycling for the rural, um, citizens will not be available for that week. Uh, we, uh, whatever those containers are called, they're dumped on Tuesdays and on Fridays. So the Friday prior, they will be picking those up and, um, taking them and returning them the next Friday. And all of our Board of Supervisors meetings, um, are online, with the exception of some work sessions and workshops, uh, at WarrenCountyIA.org. And that is my report.
Sure, can I, can I add one of them there? Um, it was good news. Uh, the legislature wanted to add, they tried to slip that, I'm not even sure if you put it in there. Uh, but it, it got through the House and it died in the Senate. But for whatever reason, there was a piece of legislation that was something the county was working on. Calls were made about, um, the furnishings for the upcoming courthouse. Whereas, uh, they wanted to split it to have more county contribution for the courthouse portion of the furnishings. I estimated a couple hundred dollars. They don't have, um, that section has been removed from the bill that was passed. They don't have the other side yet, but it's, uh, we're, we're not gonna be on the, for courthouse furnishings. But we were, I think, as far as I can come, we're telling the county and the state that this building is a courthouse, so it would have been one in a lot for us to, our additional calls and the payout. So, I was pleased.
Very good, thank you. Our next meeting, oh, sorry, item fifteen, public input. Again, state your name and your address.
I'm Sandy Peisler, and I live on Jeffy Parkway in Grateful Plaza. We had a special work meeting last, session last week regarding the farmers that access our, the plaza for their equipment. Well, yesterday, um, a jet, one of the farmers was driving a great big combine through one of the streets and hit a cable or power line. I'm not sure, I'm assuming a cable or something that was hanging overhead. Got out of the tur, got out of the combine, took the cable, threw it in the yards, got in the combine and went on down the road. And as of six P M. last night, no one had made any contact with the homeowner. Um, basically stating what he did and taking responsibility. The sheriff was called. I encouraged the people to call the sheriff. I do have pictures of the home. They ripped off the homeowner's together, halfway. And they said that, um, the people that were telling me, it said that the big concerns is, they were out there at three o'clock in the afternoon. That's when the little kids at our elementary school get out and are walking home. He obviously can't see, you know, around the vehicle or above if he's gonna hit the combine. They said he was going west on Greenfield, and then he turned on Ridgeview. Now, I know that they've been going down Greenfield, but if he's turning on Ridgeview, I'm trying to figure out where they, how they, when they come in the plaza, how did they actually access? I live at the opposite end. But we have several groups out there and people put, you know, what is happening, you know, kind of like a neighborhood watch group. And a lot of the people aren't able to come, so I was coming in. Um, I do have pictures of it. We need to know who the, I think, we need to know who this farmer is. None of us know who the farmer is. I tried to call the Iowa Department of, um, Agriculture Land Stewardship regarding them spraying the chemicals when the winds were blowing thirty miles an hour directly out of the south, just to see what kind of chemicals were sprayed. I know they need to do that, and we are Iowa, we have farms. I don't regret them doing their job, but they need to do it responsibly. And I couldn't really, they weren't really able to help me because I didn't know the farmer's name. I, she suggested I talk to the farmer. I said, "Ducky, Greg, if I knew who it was." I says, "I know the landowner's name is Grabas. That's all I know, is Dr. Grabas. I don't know anything more about him." So, what I like to do is, they obviously are getting a little more brazen in their actions of coming in the plaza. They, you know, they took the easement that they were, you know, they, there was an easement of sixty to seventy feet, and they've moved that over and tore out trees and everything else in planting this year. And I know that it's probably within their right. But, you know, I guess whoever's driving this combine, and they do that, and they know they did it because they got out and threw the cable in there, it's just irresponsible in a park. And we're talking about infrastructure of roads all over. You know, this farmer is on our road, on our road, they didn't do anything. You know, I don't think that we should be held accountable for a special assessment. But regardless, I wanna know the name of the farmer. I think we have a right to know the name of the farmer, and the homeowner needs to know so that they can contact them, telling them of their liability to fix their gutter and any inconveniences to whether it be cable or whatever, um, cable that was. I'm sure it wasn't electric or it would have affected other neighbors. So, anyway, I'd like to have the, I would like the, to find out who the farmer is, and I don't know how to go about doing that, so if you guys can help me do that. I think Aaron said that he would try and do that, and I have pictures too of the, the damage that was done to the homeowner's house. So, and I think we probably need to address the weight limit in tines and stuff. I know you said they can't, can't afford to spend three thousand dollars on science until July. Well, I don't know what they're still doing, you know, driving combines. Like that combine, I don't know a lot about farming, but, you know, it's ridiculous to wear it there.
Any others? Seeing done, I take a motion. Oh, excuse me. Um, next meeting date is May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. That is an evening meeting, and it starts at six. And I would take a motion to adjourn.
Remove adjournment. Second.